Okay, calling to order the special meeting for the budget hearing at Diamond Lake School District 76. Call please.
Ms. Corolla.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Hale.
Here.
Ms. Helfman.
Here.
Ms. Candela.
Here.
Ms. Swan.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan.
Yeah.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, perfect and just as one.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on the agenda items for the special budget meeting. Anyone has a public comment, please feel free to type that in the chat box and we will read it into the media. Eric, do we have any? And I'm going to assume based on that, that the fact that there are people physically here, that we do not have any public comments. So moving on to the budget hearing. And in the packet, you'll see that there is a memo from Eric to the board, as well as some other documents. Does anyone have any questions about the budget? Or Eric, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add?
The only thing I'll add is there's a patched notice in the paper showing it was been posted for 30 days and it's been available in our office and on the website.
Great.
Otherwise, there's been no changes since it was originally proposed.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay, and we will adjourn. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Candela?
Yes.
Ms. Corolla?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Helfman?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Swan?
Yes.
Okay, and now we will move on to the committee of the whole meeting. Calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Call please. Sure. Ms. Corolla?
Here.
Ms. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Hale?
Here.
Ms. Helfman?
Here.
Ms. Candela?
Here.
Ms. Swan?
Here.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Okay, we now open the floor to public comments on agenda items of the committee of the whole meeting. Do we have any public comments this evening? If you've joined us online, please feel free to type those in the chat box and we will read them. Okay. There being no public comments, we will move on to presentations and Dr. Corolla.
Alright, so we have one presentation this evening in that the Star assessment will present our end of year student assessment summary. And Ms. Carrera is available also for translation. So we've got, just as we gather doing the first slides in English and then the second slide of the power side in Spanish.
Alright, great. Well, I appreciate the time. There will, there's going to be some brief discussion or conversation around the STAR assessment and the F and P assessment. But after 14 months of being in a pandemic and being in and out of school and dealing with the stop and start of school and the fractioning of our assessment calendar, I have a little bit of a summary for the end of year assessment data as it relates to predominantly the STAR assessment and a little bit of data from the F and P for grades as well. Daisy, I don't know if you want to go ahead and summarize that briefly in the introduction?
Sure. Buenas tardes. Vamos a dar una presentación de resumen de evaluaciones de estudiantes del último del año. Nuestro superentendente asociado, el doctor Characa, lo que acaba de hablar y eso es un resumen de lo que acaba de hablar. Vamos a dar una discusión sobre los cambios del calendario que miramos en nuestro, en todo nuestro distrito. Y también este cómo relaciona con la discusión de los cambios en persona para los estudiantes y los estudiantes que teníamos a remoto.
So I figured I would start by sharing a little bit about what is our assessment calendar and what we would consider a comprehensive assessment system or a balanced assessment system. So I'll just briefly describe some of the assessments that we provide for our students each year. The Illinois Assessment of Readiness is an assessment that we give to all students in grades from eight. It provides, it covers both reading and math. And it's a state mandated assessment that is designed to measure student attainment, meaning where they are in terms of grade level efficiency, as measured against the state standards. And then it also measures year over year growth. We did not give the Illinois Assessment, our Illinois Assessment of Readiness, I A R last school year. And so this year, a portion of our students, approximately 70 to 75% of our students took that assessment. Those students that were here and in person at the time. We also utilize Fontes and Penau reading assessment. And this is more of a local assessment, something we give in-house. This is not state mandated. Some districts use this, some districts not. It's a benchmark assessment. And what that means is we typically give this in the fall, in the winter, and then again in the spring. However, F and P assessments are also utilized throughout the school year as well sometimes. If students are changing reading levels, so they can really be utilized quite easily and quite vividly. Then we rely on the STAR assessment. So the STAR assessment is provided to us by a company called Renaissance. It's nationally normed. It's given to hundreds of thousands of students throughout the country. And it is also used as a benchmarking system. This allows us to, again, gauge grade level fluency, actually the grade level attainment and growth in both reading and math. We typically give this to students in grades one through eight. And I think for the most part, this is an assessment that we utilize often to help design our programs. This assessment is something that we utilize to impact instruction and to differentiate studying for our kids. I'll talk a little bit more about that as well. Then we also give the access test once a year. This takes place in January. And this is typically for those students who are English learners. And so a student who has been identified as an English learner is given this assessment again once a year. And if they score four point eight or higher, they eventually graduate out of the English learner program and are no longer considered an English learner. One of the other assessments we give is the kid's assessment. And the kid's assessment is typically given to our students who are in kindergarten after the 40-day mark. And at that point, it's really designed to test or assess kindergarten readiness for our little guys coming in. And so it covers real basic mathematics skills, real basic literacy skills. It covers some self-regulatory skills, social emotional skills. And it's a, again, it's an assessment for all kindergartners, given once a year, like I said, after about 40 days. And then we have the Illinois Science Assessment, which is given to our students in grades five and eight, but it's also given in grade 11. And it's, again, given once a year. This one is also state mandated. And it helps us to gauge the percentage of our students who are proficient in science. Daisy, you want to go ahead and break that?
Próximo tenemos las evaluaciones de los grados de kindergarten hasta el octavo. Esto va a ser un resumen pero voy a hablar sobre los topik, los temas importantes que habló el doctor Characa. Aquí puede ver las evaluaciones, los contenidos que están relacionados a esas evaluaciones y cómo los utilizamos. Primero tenemos la evaluación de preparación de Illinois, que contenidos matemáticas y lectura. Esto, esta evaluación se da una vez al año. Es una evaluación obligatoria del estado que mide el éxito de nivel de grado y el crecimiento del estudiante en matemáticas y lectura de grados tres a tres al ocho. Para el próximo tenemos Fontes y Penau, que el contenido es de lectura. Y estos se usan como un punto de referencia para la, para ver la fluidez y la comprensión de lectura para los estudiantes en grados de kindergarten hasta el quinto y nos permite diferenciar grupos de lectura y niveles de lectura. Uno de los puntos que dio el doctor Characa es que no todos los distritos los usan, pero somos uno de los distritos que sí lo usamos. Para la próxima evaluación es STAR, contenidos matemáticas y lectura, punto de referencia y monitor de progreso para el crecimiento y el éxito en lectura y matemáticas para los estudiantes de grados uno al ocho. Próximos, access, que es de competencia del idioma inglés. Esto se da una vez al año. Es una evaluación obligatoria del dominio para los estudiantes que son de aprendizaje de inglés. La meta de esto es para que aprendan los estudiantes ya pueden salir del programa mientras se desarrollan a diferentes niveles de grado. La próxima evaluación es kids, los contenidos es matemáticas, lenguaje y aprendizaje social emocional. Esta es una vez al año, esta evaluación es una vez al año obligatoria del estado para medir la preparación para los estudiantes de kindergarten. Y la última es la evaluación de ciencias del estado de Illinois, que es la competencia en ciencias obligatoria también del estado de Illinois. Una vez al año para los grados de quinto y octavo, pero también se da para los estudiantes de grado 11.
Alright, and so the next slide I'm going to share with you is related to fourth grade reading growth data. And so for the board members who've seen some of these presentations in the past, this looks slightly different. So I'll just add a little context here for understanding. We have, as a district, moved away from Alpine and adopted a new data warehouse management system which helps collect all of our student data and then helps us to sort of look at, look at it through a more palatable lens. And so this is the first opportunity for us to use Edge Climber. And so the district leadership team will be receiving extensive training in August. But here's an initial glimpse as to how this program allows us to utilize some data. So let me first point out that the bar graphs, starting from the one on the left, is this fourth grade cohort who started last year in third grade. So that's third grade for this cohort, fall, third grade, winter. And then it moves to the middle bar graph is fourth grade, fall, fourth grade, winter, fourth grade, spring. So it gives you an opportunity to see two years potentially of one cohort of students. I would also remind you that we moved away from math assessment and we moved to STAR assessment at the beginning of last school year. So the yellow line indicates the national 25th percentile. So the average score for students in the 25th percentile is the yellow line. The blue line is Diamond Lake school students' average score. And so you can see that progress over time. And then the gray line is the 50th percentile average score across the nation. In that, you'll notice that each bar graph has a set of different colors. The top blue color represents the number of students in the top 20th percentile. The light blue color represents those students that are in the, in between the 70th and 80th. The green color represents those students between 60 and 69. The yellow represents those students between the 40th and the 59th. And then the orange represents those students from the 39th to 12th. And then the bottom portion is the 12th percentile and on there. So as you can see, last fall, previous school year, our students started out below national average. And as the school year progressed into the winter, we grew slightly at a faster rate than the national average. That is very typical of our students, especially after third grade, fourth and fifth, especially with a high number of English language learners. The pandemic hit, our growth rates slowed, and then we continued to see sort of a more moderate version of growth through our reading numbers at that point. Because this program is new, some of the other indicators at the bottom, like high understanding, upper zone of development, zone of development, they all relate to the same lines, but their definitions, I don't have a complete clarity on at this point. Daisy, you want to go ahead and read?
Yeah. Got it. Okay, aquí puede ver y de nuevo, esto es un resumen, siempre estamos disponibles si tiene preguntas sobre, sobre los gráficos que estamos enseñando. Esto da los datos de crecimiento en artes, perdón, ya, en artes lingüísticas de inglés para el grado cuatro. Lo que acaba de hablar el doctor Characa, lo que está viendo aquí en esta foto es, tenemos los estudiantes que del año anterior estaban en el tercer grado y que ahora están en el cuarto grado. Estamos enseñando las evaluaciones de tercer grado a su mano izquierda y luego en medio puede ver, ya es cuando están en cuarto grado. So en resumen, este, este gráfico es un resumen de los últimos dos años para los estudiantes que están ahorita en el cuarto grado. En medio son los estudiantes de cuarto grado de otoño, los, las evaluaciones de otoño y luego la mano, segundo a la derecha es de, este, del invierno y luego a la mano, a toda la mano derecha es para el cuarto grado en la primavera. Este, esto es un, un dato de evaluación que es nueva. Antes nuestro distrito tenía Alpine, que fue lo que estábamos usando, era un sistema donde colocábamos todos los datos de las evaluaciones de nuestros estudiantes. Y el entrenamiento va a ser para nuestro equipo de liderazgo en agosto. Otros de los datos que acaba de hablar el doctor Characa, lo que puede ver es que, perdón, la línea azul puede, perdón. La, la línea de azul es este, de los niveles de nuestro distrito. Y luego la, la, el color gris es de toda la nación. Hablo que, de nuevo, esto es un resumen. El año anterior están, nuestros estudiantes no estaban a nivel como los otros estudiantes de toda la nación. Pero después, lo que estamos viendo es que después del año de su grado tercero, es cuando los estudiantes van creciendo y también la pandemia nos, nos puso un poco retrasados. Pero es algo que nos, nuestros estudiantes están creciendo, de todos modos, es lo que estamos viendo.
One thing I might add to, because I'm seeing some eyes that might be squinting here, just for points of clarification. On the left-hand side is the number of students. And on the right-hand side is the scale score. So the, the lines represent the student average as it relates to that scale score. The scale score is a proprietary score that you need to start and do Renaissance. The numbers on the left-hand side represent how many students might be within a certain percentile band. So like, if we're taking a look at that first bar graph on the left, that would basically state that we have about 22 students, just generally speaking from looking at that graph, that are representing the 11th percentile and below. I just want to make sure that if there are maybe questions now, that maybe I answer them before they become less, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry. I didn't want to derail you, but I'm like having trouble interpreting the graph. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding it. So my question is, that's the way, if the gray line is the national 50th percentile and that's moving across to the right, and that last column on the right, where that ends up above the high understanding group?
The two don't relate.
Okay.
They, they do not relate, and that's kind of why I was clarifying. The, the two do not relate. That gray line is just related to the numbers on the right-hand side. So what that means is that at the beginning, let's just follow the gray line. At the beginning, at the beginning of their third grade year, they had roughly, the average score was 360. At the end of their fourth grade year, their score was roughly 500, let's say. So that's, the lines only relate to the right-hand column, the right-hand scale score. The bar graphs only, only indicate the number of students within a percentile band. Does that make sense?
I don't know that it makes sense to the non-educators.
Yeah.
It's capable.
And who determined the scale? So that's proprietary. So Renaissance determines a 1,400-point scale that extends from kindergarten to fourth, to, I guess, high school. And they determined, they match the standards to a point system. So they take, they, they, they turn qualitative standards, qualitative standards into quantitative points. And then they, then they, they build out a spectrum of where they expect kids to fall, the grade level. And that is the STAR score. Let me, let me ask this a different way. Who determined the percentile relative to each color? Meaning, the, the dark blues are people who fell in the top, in the 100 to 80th and the somewhat light blues in 80th to 70th. And who, was that us or was that? Yes and no. Originally, it's Edge Climber who made these, these individualized percentile groups. However, when we sit down in August as a district leadership team, we will go back into the settings and readjust some of those settings to indicate what, and I don't want to get hung up in the weeds here or get things too complicated, but we will align this more closely to our, our response to intervention program, which means that we will put the, we will put the levels at what we deem necessary for kids who need intervention and who need additional services, kids that are in the norm, which tend to be between the 35th and the 65th percentile, and those kids that are above. For this, at this point, having us onboarding all of this data through the Edge Climber system, this is, again, as I had mentioned earlier, this is the first look at it, so I look at the data. So I wanted to be able to give you a breakdown at least as to what those, those groups mean. Still see more eyes there.
I just have to follow up. I think, I think I'm understanding, I think it's hard for us to understand the lines and the bars together. It looks like they kind of mean different things. So is that, the trajectory of the gray line, is that essentially telling me that by the end of fourth grade, most of our students are above that 50th percentile?
The, the gray line indicates the national average.
Yeah.
So that gray line is what the national average looks like from third to fourth grade.
Just based on the score then?
Based on the, the scale score, that, that right-hand number. The blue line is us.
Is that the gray line and yellow line is that same time period? We're looking at our students from point 20 to point 21. The gray and the yellow, that's not the same time? Is that the same time period?
Yeah.
Or is that overall natural?
Going left, yeah, going, going left to right is a time period, starting in third grade, winter in third grade, fall, fourth grade, winter, fourth grade, spring, fourth grade. So going from left to right is a, is a basically a timeline. And then you're, you're following a growth chart, which is our blue line. The blue line represents the average Diamond Lake school district student, which as you can see, there is no average Diamond Lake school district student. If you look at the bar, at the bar and you see how fragmented our students are in terms of kids in the 20th percentile and kids in the 10th, 10th percentile and below, there, there's a, there is no average.
Okay, so the vertical bar graphs in different colors are roughly about the 90th, fourth graders, that's just the same grade.
Yep.
And then the blue line marks the 50th percentile of our students.
Yep, that's right. The average, sorry, yes, the average. And then the gray line is everybody in the nation who takes Renaissance STAR. This is the 50th percentile average.
So meaning, so the last bar graph that we did before, what you just got, that, that's right?
That's the most recent assessment that was just taken.
So that shows that even our top tier, highest performing test papers were below the national average?
The two don't relate. That's what, that's where joy was just at. The two don't.
What does it mean?
What does that mean? So what that, if you compare, the, the last bar graph does not connect to the line graph. The, the last bar graph shows, the last point on that, on that line is that our students are roughly around an average of 480 points. The national average is roughly around 500, 520. The gray line, the gray line represents the national average, the blue line is us.
No, but what about the color blue and white?
So what that would indicate is that we had maybe one or two students that were in the 20th percentile the time before, the top 20, that are no longer in that top 20 percentile. They moved to the next group below them. You can see at the bottom, our, our, the number of kids in the lowest percentile rose. It's almost like if we showed the line chart without the stacked bars, it gives sort of a trend. And then. If you can separate the two. And then show the, the bars, there would be a, there would be a story. Because just the lines say that we're about in the, what, 38th percentile, whatever it is. Yeah. We ended up, I'm sorry, in about the 38th percentile. But, but you're telling, but, but there's a different story when we start breaking out, I guess, from cohorts. Yeah, the different, the different groups in the different percentile band. Yeah.
Can you tell what the percentile data is for each color?
Yeah, so the blue represents the 80th percentile and above. The light blue below it represents the 79th, excuse me, the 70th to the 79th percentile. The green represents the 60th to the 69th percentile. Then the yellow is the largest percentile band, which represents the 40th, basically to the 60th, that 20th percentile band. Then the orange represents the 39th percentile to the 12th percentile. And then the red basically represents 11th percentile below. So this is a question on the fifth grade STAR assessment, whether or not you can evaluate this data. So I just want to make sure I'm not getting wrong.
Not the yellow. Or the yellow.
I think we might be in the red.
So, so if we are, are looking, you know, the national averages are great, but if we're really focused on our district, we really want to look at how, where our lowest performing students, it looks like from the beginning of third to the winter, we actually had some growth because those friends moved up. But then with the pandemic, it looks like they're right back where they were, if not a little bit higher. And like you said, some of those kids that had been in the zone of development might have dropped down because now we have a larger low average. So you, you had said that you would be giving us a better, maybe a better breakdown of those students and sort of what those percentages look like as far as the growth, like the growth or the shift?
Yeah, well, the, the story you're telling is exactly right. I mean, and that's exactly what this, we have seen and what we will see over the next three slides is exactly that. Students, when, when, when we have a larger or greater locus of control, meaning they're here more often and they're in our, in our presence, especially our English learners and especially our kids who are coming from backgrounds of poverty, they need more school and they need to be here. Those tend to be the kids in the, in the, in the students in red portion and orange, that portion and blue. And at the end of this presentation, I will talk a little bit about next steps and how we address this moving forward. There's certainly a lot of things that we as a district leadership team are discussing, having conversations about. So I'll discuss a little bit, if you can read me. But just to recap, the bar graphs represent the number of students in the percentile bands that I mentioned. The line graphs represent, basically, I'm going to be like.
I think I'm going to.
Me and me and Eric.
I think I'll understand it better after this.
Okay. The line graph represent the actual scale score, that proprietary STAR Renaissance, Renaissance scale score that grows over time in comparison to the national average.
Good luck, Daisy.
I didn't even get to the slide yet. So this is the next, where am I in the, in the presentation? Am I still on the earth?
But now we know. It's gotta be notion.
Now you know how, I'm, I'm glad I took a moment to explain that.
Yes, could, again, it would have been bad.
Well, I, I saw you and Bob been talking there, and I could see what one sixteen, so I, I figured I'd stop there. All right. The next one then is, Daisy, we don't need to translate, I think that will go to the next slide, and I'll explain that one, unless you're gonna go back over all of that Q and A.
I was just gonna, um, just give a summary of, you know, just explaining how the, the graph works. I'll be quick and brief. El doctor, tuvieron una discusión la mesa directiva sobre como, para entender las gráficas que ve, pero en resumen, las gráficas de barra que ve, las rojas, naranjadas, amarillas, verdes y azules, eso da, son los gráficos de barras para los estudiantes, el número de los estudiantes, y luego las líneas que ve de diferentes colores, de nuevo, abajo puede ver este, puede ver el entendimiento de eso, pero eso es la, la escala que usa Renaissance para determinar el punto de, de referencia de donde deben estar los, los estudiantes, es como un punto de sistema que usan ellos.
Clear as mud, Dave? Perfect. All right, the next one, we'll go back to fourth grade math. So now that we have a clear understanding and a conceptual understanding of the charting graph that's in front of you, we'll then move to the math portion. So what you see here is again, really the blue line is following Diamond Lake School District seventy-six students. They started in their third grade year, they were slightly behind national averages. As we progressed through their third grade year, we were starting to catch up to national averages. We went several months and reassessed them close to the, at the beginning of this school year, again, still relatively close to national averages, and then see a dip, and a stagnation in their student growth in fourth grade math. I would also just add another thing too. And you'll see in the, in the last slide, as in this slide, that the number of students in the lowest portion is tending to grow over the last year and a half. I would also say this, in a typical year, the STAR assessment is given here in our building with a teacher in front of the child. And so if I was, if I was a doctor and I were making decisions on this type of data, I would probably be a little bit skeptical, because not all of this data is completely and absolutely reliable, right? This is an uncontrolled environment, and the variables that go into this type of data are often a little bit more controlled when students are all in person, learning in front of us. Some of these kids are at home. We have several examples, when you look at the, the data where kids are starting out at one point in the school year and absolutely dropping low, and then you have the other side of that, where all of a sudden a kid who might be in the ten or eleven percentile is in the ninety percentile. And those are just, those are anomalies to this type of data, so just to share that with you. Daisy, you wanna translate that?
Aquí puede ver los datos de crecimiento de matemáticas de grado cuatro, and de nuevo, di las, di los ejemplos de, de cómo leer los gráficos en la foto anteriormente. De nuevo, nada más para el recordatorio, aquí puede ver en la línea azul son los estudiantes del Distrito setenta y seis, y luego en la línea gris es dos estudiantes de, de la, de nacionalmente con el mismo programa, y de dónde deben estar los estudiantes del Distrito setenta y seis. So puede ver que mientras los estudiantes van desarrollándose y moviéndose de, de, cuando estaban en tercer grado de dos mil diecinueve y luego ahora están en, en cuarto grado de, del año veinte veinte, este, iban muy cercas a nivel nacional de donde deberían estar, pero una cosa que habló el doctor Jarraca es que, este, el entorno de los estudiantes que tenemos que tomar en cuen, en cuenta es que cambió el entorno de nuestros estudiantes, o cosas se miraron diferentes para ellos de aprendizaje, era diferente, los niveles, este, creo, you know, creemos que no estaban de donde deben estar, porque unos estudiantes no estaban en persona y unos estaban en remoto, y miramos el impacto que eso tuvo para nuestros, nuestros estudiantes. Y lo pueden ver aquí en las gráficas que acaba de enseñar.
Moving on then to seventh grade, English Language Arts, again, you can follow the same type of.
Sure. Just trying to understand the colors of the bars here, and I totally get what you're saying, that that is just representative of the number of students, that it only relates to those numbers on the left side of the grid, but when I look at, as we look at the color key at the bottom there, are those, it's communicating different things, because it says, from the red, at one point the key says that it's low, and then on the other side it seems to be that same color, it's not red.
Right.
So is that, that low performing.
Yeah.
Not ready for, not ready for the next grade level, not ready for the current level of instruction.
And so when I, I had begun the presentation, that was one of the caveats that I had there for you, in, in terms of the terminology of high understanding, upper zone of development, zone of development, lower zone, and not ready, I cannot accurately speak to.
Okay.
To those. I do know, however, that each one of the, the colors that are represented here represent the percentiles that I gave you. However, having just onboarded this data through Edge of Climber, I'm not yet privy to all of that information, so.
So the, the one, in the key, the one part says high, above average, high average, low average, low average, and low.
Those are the percentiles that I gave, those are the national percentiles.
Well, there's the things on across, the first one is what you're uncertain.
Yeah, as to, I don't have all the information yet, I don't, I don't wanna get into guessing, guessing correctly.
Okay, all right.
Sorry about that. So again, seventh grade data kind of tells a similar story. You see that we're sort of moving along at typical, or national averages in terms of growth, but then we sort of, we sort of stagnated through the fall to the winter, and then made a little bit of progress towards the end, to the end of the year. Again, I think when we have a controlled environment, which brings students back next year, we will have a more accurate assessment data, but I didn't want to go without sharing some of this with you.
So what, and speaking of a controlled environment, that spring data from this year, we had a high percentage of students who were in person and took this test here in the building, whereas all of the fall data, they took it at home, probably, all of winter data would have been at home as well, around, calling it winter, I mean, the transition.
I think all of the winter data was, I don't know, it hit in October, then right after winter break, and then.
So, do we have any indicator to show?
The difference between.
Difference between students who took the test, who were receiving in-person instruction and took the test here, versus students who were receiving in-person instruction and took it at home.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I have not broken that data out at this point, but you do bring up a good point. At this point, at the, at the point of spring, we have, I think it was approximately seventy percent of our kids were back in person, and so, you know, with that percentage of students, maybe that potentially had impacted some of the, the increased growth in that, in that one trimester.
I think that the spring, the number of students who were accepted, or were then the third, the third, yeah, fall.
There, there may have been students who just simply didn't take it, who didn't participate, and we're looking at that, that's probably about four or five students, so it's, again, the entire student body at any grade level is about a hundred in this district, so every student represents roughly one percent. And so as much as that might seem like a large number, it's really only about three or, three or four percent of students, and we do have that type of fluctuation within each grade level. We have, I, I remember correctly, about a twelve percent probability that it's this district. Then, moving on to the final graph, which is just related to grade math data, you see a relatively, a relatively stagnant seventh grade group. It looks as if, you know, there was some, some progress being made from that first STAR assessment in the fall of their sixth grade year to their winter score. I don't necessarily think that that was, that's an academic, that is academically true. I think that there, there may be some incorrect data within that number, because that was the first time some of these kids had taken the test. I do recall that there were a couple of, a couple of pickups within the assessment window at that time, so it looks like we got back on track more towards the winter of last year, and then kind of moved forward this year. Again, our hope is to move that blue line above that gray line. That is our, our, our focus. We have sixty-six percent of our kids who enter this district, roughly sixty-six percent of them, who are not kindergarten ready, so you are always in a position of trying to make up for that lost time. And so our, our data trends tend to be just that. All students are English language learners, in that cave, the fifth grade window, we see a lot of kids struggle, and then as they move into the middle school, we tend to see kids start to acquire language and make some significant growth. It's not true of all students, you know, let's not forget that all of these are individuals, they're human beings, and they have, you know, various home lives, and various support systems, and all of those other, other variables that go into their education. But again, you know, our, our hope is that when we re-enter school in the fall, we can assess these students and find out which kids need additional support, and then I'll, I'll walk away with that for that towards the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, no, thank you. All right, de nuevo, como las otros, los otros gráficos, aquí podemos ver el movimiento y el crecimiento de nuestros, de los estudiantes del Distrito setenta y seis en la línea azul. De nuevo, la línea gris es para, de los estudiantes del promedio de la nación. Nuestro, nuestra meta es que se mueva la línea azul, que, que muestra a los estudiantes del Distrito setenta y seis arriba, de la, de la línea gris que puede ver, y eso es algo que siempre estamos tratando de trabajar para desarrollar a nuestros estudiantes, para que alcancen a ese nivel de donde deben de estar, para que sean exitosos y haga, lleguen a sus metas de donde deben estar. Pero también debemos de tomar en cuenta, y tomamos en cuenta de las situaciones individualmente de nuestros, nuestros estudiantes, si son aprendizajes del idioma de inglés, o cómo viven en sus casas, también tomamos todo eso en cuenta, pero de todos modos, nuestro, nuestra meta es para que nuestros estudiantes lleguen a ese nivel de éxito.
Okay, so, all right. Next up is the Bontis and Penau assessment, I just have two brief charts related to that, which cover second grade and fifth grade, F and P reading. Just a, a brief update, F and, the F and P assessment is just a, a grade level assessment, it's given one-on-one between the teacher and the student, and it helps determine a student's grade level proficiency. F and P again has another proprietary scale, John, it is a reading ladder, A to Z. I didn't make it up, that's the Bontis and Penau reading ladder, it's actually an AA in there too, and then Z plus, but I didn't want to get too complicated. We use the F and P assessment as a benchmark system, meaning we typically do it fall, sometime winter and spring, and we always provide, we always provide students an opportunity, if they're moving along that ladder, an opportunity to get an additional assessment, to move them from one, from one ladder to the next. The nice thing about F and P assessments, unlike state mandated assessments, is that they give us real-time information, actually give us the ability to adapt our instruction to help meet the needs of the kid. So if a student is at, you know, a reading level I, and he's graduating out of I, we can move him to the next level quickly, rather than waiting in here for the Illinois assessment of readiness data to share, you shared with us. Daisy, you wanna summarize that briefly?
Ahora vamos a hablar de la evaluación a nivel de lectura Francis y Penau. Esto, esta evaluación se utiliza para evaluar la competencia en lectura. La escalera de lectura de Francis y Penau cubre los pasos de A a Z, se administra como una evaluación de referencia de dos a tres veces al año según sea necesario cuando los estudiantes ascienden o se mueven en sus niveles de grado. Típicamente, lo vemos en otoño, invierno y primavera, y las evaluaciones de F and P o Francis y Penau brindan a los educadores datos en tiempo real y permiten a los maestros conocer a los niños en su zona de desarrollo de dónde están actualmente.
All right, so you're only allowed to look through one eye while you look at this chart at a time, okay? So with one eye, you can only look at the black bar graph, that is the fall, fall levels for our second grade kiddos. A second grade kiddo should typically fall between I and N. There's, that would be a low performing at I and a high performing at N, so that's typically where you're going to see what F and P would dictate as a second grade group. So the black bars represent how our kids performed in the fall. Then as you move to the spring, represents the gold bar, so generally speaking, the shift that you want to see is more of those gold bars moving to the right, and, excuse me, less of those black bars moving to the right. So hopefully that gives a little bit of an indication, and basically what's occurring at, for any child, is that they're moving up the ladder as they continue throughout the school year. They typically start, like I said, a typical second grader starts in and around I or J, and then they move up. Generally speaking, two to three or four levels.
Okay, como un resumen de lo que acaba de hablar el doctor Jarraca, estos son los datos de lectura de F and P para el segundo grado. Lo que queremos es que los estudiantes estén dentro de las letras I y la letra N en nivel del segundo año, y aquí puede ver, este, los gráficos negros significa, este, significa el otoño, y luego lo amarillo es de, de la primavera, los datos de primavera, y aquí los puede ver, de nuevo, cubriendo los diferentes pasos de letras de A y C, y cómo se mueven los estudiantes.
All right, and then the next group represents the fifth grade forward. So again, you can see a nice trend of moving those kids that are in the fall, in around D, Q, R, and S, moving them towards the right, where our fifth grader should be ending. The fifth grade forward tends to live in the world between R and W, so typical fifth grader should live in the, in the world, starting to hear at R and then here roughly around W. Again, you, you see some positive growth there and some, some positive movement. This is somewhat typical of the English learner population, we have a high number of English language learners, it tends to typically take between five and seven years for them to get to the point where they feel, where they're academically comfortable in the language, and so they're, this is sort of a trend that you may see that I present over, over time.
I just have a question. Are these showing their instructional levels or their dependent levels?
This is just their instructional level. The, it's a great question, I was actually talking about this today, because you know that there are instructional levels, and there's fiction levels, and informational text levels, this one I believe is based on fiction instructional level. There's some, there's some more nuance to this chart that I have simplified, and if you know much about, you know, the, the ladder and so on, it's a word, you recognize that there's probably more, more to this, but for the purpose of this presentation, I wanted to make it a little bit more.
De nuevo, aquí puede ver los datos de punto de referencia de lectura, pero eso es para el grado quinto, y el movimiento de nuestros estudiantes. De nuevo, el, el color negro significa del otoño, y el amarillo de primavera. El doctor Jarraca habló sobre, este, nuestros, la mayor, mayoría de nuestros estudiantes, que son aprendizajes. que son aprendizajes del idioma de, del inglés y los niveles de instrucción fue una discusión. De nuevo, siempre estamos disponibles para hablar con ustedes sobre esto. Pero aquí puede ver el punto de referencia de, de los estudiantes y cómo se van desarrollando.
All right. Then the last two slides that I've presented just talk about looking forward to next year. And at the top, I just want to make sure that it's definitively understood. One, that the goal for next year is we need to increase student growth. We have unfinished business that has occurred over the last fourteen months. So in order to bring our kids back up to grade level or even to where they were prior to the pandemic, it's important that we focus definitively on student growth. That is our core business as an organization. That is what we, what we do. And that is what are all of us on this team are dedicated to and for. We want to see our kids succeed and thrive. So here, I just wanted to, you know, to say that definitively, but then also share some of the things we need to, we need to do as the district leadership team to continue moving forward in the right direction. And one, that we need to maintain the utilization of what I've described here, which is that comprehensive assessment. Basically, use our STAR data, use our assessment data that relates to F and P and even some of our local assessments that we're using in-house, unit assessments and things of that nature. We need to have timely and comprehensive data that informs instruction on a regular basis. We can't wait for the once-a-year IAR data. We can't wait for the once-a-year access data. Those, those are not going to help us impact what we need to impact for students. Additionally, kids are in school less than half of the year. Like, let's be honest, we have one hundred and seventy-four days a year and where kids who are English learners and kids who are coming from impoverished backgrounds need to improve our after-school programs in both the fall and the, both the fall and spring, and then also in our summer, summer program. So we need to, essentially, we need to increase student engagement by giving them more minutes of instruction. That's the simple equation for how you move kids forward. In doing that, we want to continue to utilize our response intervention program, meaning we're utilizing a comprehensive assist, assessment system to identify those students who are in need and then providing them with additional instructional minutes. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit about some of the, the summer school opportunities that we have this year and how we're going to bring them into fruition probably at our, at our next meeting, I believe on the seventeenth. But we're looking into some of those things as well. Daisy, did you want to?
Mirando hacia adelante para el próximo año escolar veintiuno, veintidós, nuestra meta es aumentar el crecimiento de los estudiantes y capturar el aprendizaje inconcluso. Uno de nuestros, de nuestros objetivos es de nuevo mantener un sistema de evaluación integral, lo que acaba de ver en la presentación, STAR, F and P, Access, IAR y las evaluaciones locales. Mi propósito es de darnos los datos a tiempo y amplios para informarnos de los programas y la inscripción para nuestros estudiantes. Otro de nuestro objetivo es aumentar los programas de después y antes de la escuela y de verano, y eso es algo muy importante para nosotros porque también tenemos el conocimiento que los estudiantes no están con nosotros de todo, todo el año. El propósito es aumentar la cantidad de minutos de servicio para nuestros estudiantes para que se desempeñen por, que se desempeñan por debajo del nivel de grado para mejorar el crecimiento de ellos. Y de nuevo, continuará nuestro programa de respuesta a la intervención RTI. Y el propósito de esto es que identifica a los estudiantes con dificultades y les brinda intervenciones para mejorar el éxito académico.
Again, for the purpose of improving student growth and moving our kids in the right direction, we need to maintain our continuous cycle of improvement for our curriculum. So we have an instructional leadership team and a solid structure in this district, which helps move our curriculum development forward. We have a regular cycle of improvement, which, which occurs throughout the school year and during the summer. That those curricular teams work on their roadmaps, their scope and sequence. They align their common assessments. And in the future, we'll be moving towards a standard-based reporting system that allows us to have real-time understanding of where our students are, not in terms of grades and the accumulation, accumulation of points, but rather where our students are in terms of relation to the standards. We need to utilize some of the things that we've learned over the last fourteen months and utilize virtual programming to help support our kids outside of the regular school day. So this summer school program is utilizing the program that we have called Imagine Learning that we've adopted. And it's a, it's an adaptive system that we're piloting this summer that's going to allow us to meet kids where they are at, at their appropriate instructional level, give them real-time instruction through this online platform, both during the summer and then hopefully in an after-school program if this goes well in the future, to do exactly what we need to do, which is we need to make up for the fact that we only have one hundred and seventy-four days a year. And so we need to add minutes somewhere else and utilizing some of the new technology that's available using high-quality virtual programs might, might allow us to do that. And then lastly, we want to continue to invest in our human capital and that is to just maintain our professional development plan. John, I believe in the last presentation we had, you sort of asked like, what, what's the purpose of that professional development plan? Why do we have that? And the, the reason that we, we invest in our teachers during our summer learning institute, where we have four days of professional development for all of our teachers, the reason we do curricular teams and curriculum planning, the reason we spend all of our institute days, our late starts and early releases, focused on, on instructional quality, to make sure that our, our teachers are very well aware of what the standards are, what those standards look like to live in a classroom and what the educational experiences are that manifest themselves from those standards. They're just very generic statements. They have to come to life in the classroom. So we provide a professional development plan, which is the one I shared with you guys last time, and have it in place for next year to ensure that there is, we have quality teachers here. And I should also add, you know, with, with several retirees this year, as you're going to be seeing a large number of new staff members down on the board agenda, we have a mentorship program. So we will ensure that those new teachers get drafted into our teams and they're partnered with, with a mentor to continue to ensure that we have strong teachers and strong instructional quality.
Continuando para, mirando hacia, hacia adelante de nuevo, teniendo el conocimiento que hay aprendizaje inconcluso, queremos mantener nuestro ciclo de mejoramiento del plan de estudios. Los equipos curriculares continuarán fortaleciendo el plan de estudios a través de la alineación de los estándares y la evaluación. El propósito es aumentar el rigor académico, mejorar la calidad de instrucción y asegurar la alineación y integridad del, del plan de estudio, estudios para mejorar el crecimiento de nuestros estudiantes. También queremos utilizar la programación, la programación virtual para apoyar a nuestro programa RTI, respuesta a la Intervención. Y esto va a ser algo nuevo que vamos a tratar este, para, en, cuando regresen los estudiantes. Esto es una programación virtual que permite aumentar los minutos de servicio fuera del día escolar típico, lo que aumenta la participación de los estudiantes para un mayor aprendizaje para ellos. Y el último puede ver, mantener nuestro plan de desarrollo profesional. Y lo tenemos esto en nuestro distrito con los días institutos de verano, equipos de currículo, entrenamiento instructivo y los días institutos y días de comenzar tarde. Lo que este, nuestro plan de desarrollo profesional está diseñado para aumentar la capacidad de los maestros y mejorar la calidad de instrucción para mejorar los resultados de los estudiantes. Miramos a muchos de nuestras maestras y maestros que se estaban jubilando este año y tenemos un poco de cambio, pero de nuevo queremos el, el entrenamiento para que ellos, todo nuestro personal sea exitoso para que también entorno a nuestros estudiantes también.
Here, I have, I have something. I just got to tell you. The data that you showed here today, I mean, this is just excellent. I mean, and, and the platform, I mean, at first blush, the stuff that we were looking at looked a little odd. And it was like a three-dimensional chess. But, and when I first saw it by myself the other day, I just, I just skipped over it, you know, I just couldn't figure it out. But it sort of grows on you really quickly. And, and there's a method to the madness. And, you know, and these proprietary, you know, the secret sauce, as you call it, you know, there's, there's reasons for that too. And, and I'm really appreciating you showing it to us earlier rather than later. You just got it. And like I said, this is really, really powerful stuff. No, and, you know, data doesn't tell the whole story. Each, each student is an individual, but, but it allows us to develop a fact-based story of in general, you know, what's going on. And this is really, really good stuff. And thank you.
And I appreciate that. And I think, you know, the district leadership team came together about a year ago and wanted to onboard at your climate. And so I think even having it, you know, with your support, obviously, having the support of bringing on a data warehouse system like this helps us to be able to present graphs, charts and things like this. So hopefully, if nothing else, like you said, it grew on you. Maybe there was some learning that took place after, so that, you know, after some explanation, hopefully it worked.
I have a question. Are we giving the F and P in Spanish to the dual language kids?
Yeah, the dual language lives to also take the F and P assessment as well.
And then, so is that right now the only Spanish assessment we're getting? Other than A, B, C, obviously, it's different.
Yeah. The STAR assessment does offer a Spanish component. I had the teachers in the dual language program that, that assessment. And they felt as if that assessment does not provide, it's not an accurate assessment.
Sure.
However, I mean, you may know about this as well. We do have the Apple assessment.
Right. Okay. I was gonna answer on that.
Yeah. And so this year, based on, you know, our kids being here or not being here, we didn't perform the Apple assessment with the exception of those kids that went to Stevenson who were using it for the place.
Okay.
But two years ago, we did, we did utilize that assessment. And we plan to do that again next year, to continue to utilize that assessment to help gauge our, at least give us an indication as to where our kids are that are in the dual.
Okay. That's helpful. And then I just kind of had a comment. I think, I think we had a lot of, we're kind of confused about the data and getting used to it. Do you think that at a future date, you can kind of present a breakdown of the numbers? So what number of kids took each test? What number of kids fell, you know, in kind of quartile ranges? So what number of kids were, you know, twenty-five to fifty percent down below, twenty-fifth to fifty, fifty, thirty-five, thirty-six, you know, whatever? So we could just kind of get an idea for where the kids are falling. I know that with our school being so small, that, you know, one kid could really, or a couple of kids missing really kind of throws off where those numbers might end up being.
Yeah.
But I think that that, like, us being able to see that in conjunction with the data, I think gives us kind of a better understanding of, you know, kind of where the kids are.
You know, and I know typically in the fall, once we come back and we have IAR data and so on, so I typically do an assessment data presentation at that time. I can certainly do that. And I think at that point, then I will, all of us at this table will have a better understanding as to edifying the, and the system. And we will be able to better marry our RTI program to those bars and those colored coordinates. So that'll give you a more clear picture and understanding as to how many kids are in each, any percentile band as it relates to how we impact.
Yeah. I think, I mean, maybe if you don't mind doing that, if we could at least just see where the kids ended up this spring. I think it would give the board a better idea of kind of how did students were potentially impacted by the pandemic. And then we could kind of use that data in looking at the goals for the fall just to how it was kind of, you know, have a mindset as to kind of where the kids are going and then where you're looking for growth in the future. I think that just gives us a better picture of like, here's who we're starting. You know, I, I know that even in seeing how my own children did and getting feedback from them and taking the test, I know that there were a million different factors, you know, this year in looking at the testing. And so it's not necessarily an accurate measure of how we kids are doing. But I think it will give us a framework to look at, like, where do you want to move from, you know, this spring?
Yeah. Based on how what you were just mentioning, do you think it would, would it be advantageous to provide that data after our fall assessment? And the reason I say that is because then you would have clear data. Like, everybody's been in-house, if not, no big deal. I'm just, I'm just questioning.
The only reason I would say no to that is because I think that essentially the goal setting is done. Right? And so I think it gives us a frame, like, if we, kind of in our last, whatever, last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, but where we essentially talked about, it helps for us to be able to see specific metrics and specific growth. And so we can have that framework, like, here's where the kids ended up. You're looking at, you know, increasing growth by a certain percentile or, you know, having kids continue on their trajectory of growth, which was X, Y, Z percentile. I think the fact is for the board helps us frame what you're working towards.
Gotcha. All right. I just want to make sure that the data that you're receiving is accurate.
No, I, I understand that. And I think we can all take it with a grain of salt.
Sure.
It's not going to be perfect data. But I think at least that gives us kind of a mindset of, okay, this is where we're, we're starting. This is where we're trying to end up.
Yeah, I can divide that.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions about the moving forward. So I was wondering, like, who qualifies for a response intervention? Is that based on just the testing or is that based on the grades as well? And then, like, is it based on percentiles or how does that work?
Yeah. So our, our RTI program sort of takes into consideration, it's like a triangle, right? It's, they're called tiers. And so pretty much every student receives tier one instruction. And that's any student who basically falls above, let's say, the twenty, the twenty-ninth percentile is the number that we tend to use. So anybody above the twenty-ninth percentile is not needing an intervention. And they're performing relatively close to grade level. Their typical instructional day should suffice to support them in their, their academic skill. Any student below the twenty-ninth percentile would be somebody who would be identified for a intervention, additional intensive reading minutes, attention points, additional intensive math minutes. However, we don't just use the STAR assessment because as you, these are kids, right? And sometimes they'll take more time, sometimes they'll be frustrated, say the heck with it. And, you know, sometimes they'll take forty-five minutes to take the test and another time they'll take ten. So we take a look at, yes, their STAR assessment data, but then we also take a look at their grades to see if the teacher would be able to validate that. We look at past assessment data. We would potentially look at, probably not this year, but in the past, we would look at their IAR data, where they are in terms of the Illinois assessment readiness. And so what I keep referring to as a balanced or comprehensive assessment system is like, you don't just look at one data point of human being because you'll get a, you'll get the wrong narrative. So you have to take a look at multiple data points. But then make a decision and say, all right, this kid is generally just being falling below the twenty-ninth percentile. And it would be that child who would receive additional reading services, math services at the school program, summer school program, things of that.
And then another question I had, one thing that you mentioned is that it's a percent of our students are kindergarten ready.
Yeah.
And they come to us. Has there been, actually, a question of extending on pre-k or even just, like, programs that kids can use, you know, like, that is provided to them, even if they're not registered, but like, that they can do at home? I'm thinking like Easy Mouse or whatever, or something along those lines.
Yeah. I mean, we, we have over the last several years sought to expand the pre-k program. But, you know, that's certainly, you know, something that we would take into consideration, especially now with all that we've learned through this virtual experience. If we can give people access to some of the programming that will help at least expose students to that, to that environment. There's, there's a lot that goes into the recipe prior to kindergarten. And making sure we capitalize on those five years is really, really important. Investments in early education really show different. Investments in early education really show dividends and that may be something that we have to consider down the road.
I know what I just had a question.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, in the past, we've done kickoff to kindergarten the last several years. So we invite students and we have both been a part of our pre-k program as well. As students, we just had register for kindergarten. So that's been very helpful in previous years, so hopefully the district will be back to that.
And then I had noticed that you have a test that kids pass. Who is that administered to?
That's. The kids' test is administered to all kindergarten students, but it's not really a test like a paper pencil test. The kindergarten teachers have to observe, I think it's fourteen, various characteristics. And it's watching them interact in the hallway. It's watching them play with one another. It's watching them ask for help and then they just kind of keep on a profile and then submit that.
And is that where that sixty-six percentile or fifty-six percentage are not kindergarten ready? That where that number comes from then?
I think that what we're looking for for kindergarten ready would be students who have a concept of print. So that they know a book is going to have words in the story. They understand letters and their names. They have some ability to recognize colors, some numbers, some level of one-to-one correspondence. So we have quite a few factors that we've narrowed down in order to determine whether or not the students who are coming in are ready. And the majority of ours come in without any letters on the concept of print. So we're really excited when they do make so much progress the first, you know, year, it's under one.
And I just have one other question. Can you explain, like, for the STAR test, is that done, has gone through?
It's online.
An adaptive test or is it, okay, so if a student runs into an issue with something like, I don't know. So it adds on each?
Yeah, so basically, and maybe an adaptive test means like, a student takes an assessment question. Sorry for, you know, they take an assessment item. They, they answer that assessment item correctly and move them to the next level. They answer that one correctly, they move to the next level. They answer it incorrectly and they move it down, they answer it correctly. And they, so it's adaptive to how they answer each question. So eventually, as they sort of move through these questions, it gives them a general baseline level as to where they're at. That's what adaptive means in my mind, I'm not sure of that.
Yeah, no, that's, yes, okay.
Yep.
Thank you both. Okay, that concludes our presentations. We will be moving on to our business agenda. We have a number of items to approve and then just some review. The first item is on this project and that is for approval on campus June coming back. The next item is approving the amended budget. We had just held the budget hearing. I think there weren't any questions, but I don't know if anyone had any questions before we move on to actually approve the amended budget. Looks like that's a no. So I'm going to go ahead and read that resolution. Whereas ILPS one oh five five slash seventeen dash one directs the board to provide at least one public hearing prior to final action on the amended budget. And whereas the notice of public hearing must be published in a local newspaper at least thirty days prior to the time of the hearing. Therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Sixth Board of Education held the budget hearing on June eighth, twenty twenty-one. The board adopts the final fiscal year twenty-one amended budget as presented. May I have a motion to approve please?
Yes.
Great, the next item is also for action and that is approving the classified staff twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two salary. We have resolved the Diamond Lake Seventy-Sixth Board of Education, approve the recommendation to approve the classified staff salaries as presented. May I have a motion to approve please?
Second.
Juan, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the next item is also for action. And that is approving a performance bonus. We have resolved the Diamond Lake Seventy-Sixth Board of Education, approve the recommendation to award Miss Mari Niquetier a one-time performance bonus. As outlined in the attached memo. I have a motion to approve please.
Second. Juan, yes. Bayla, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And then I'll ask, I know for action this evening is a personnel item. We have resolved the Diamond Lake Seventy-Sixth Board of Education, except for the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have nine new hires and one resignation. May I have a motion to approve please?
Mr. Cabello?
Yes.
Yes.
That concludes our business agenda for this evening. Moving on to board's discussion. Does we have any items for board's discussion? Okay, the only thing I wanted to mention is that if our board was interested in submitting a resolution to IASB. That due date is June twenty-third. I know we haven't done that in the past, so this reminder probably doesn't give us all that much time. But I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that and bring that up in case anyone was interested. I think you all would have gotten an email from IASB that outlining this information. And for our new board members, if you don't have that, I'd be as happy as you. But those resolutions are then kind of presented at a committee meeting where they're discussed. And then IASB has a board that essentially decides whether or not they're going to move forward. And then we will get a packet of information that includes the resolutions that are going to be presented at the triple five happen in November. In the fall, and then we will have that opportunity to discuss them as a board prior to that vote. So just to kind of give you some background, but I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that's coming up. Okay, we had no freedom of information, no notices and communication. So we just have two items on the board meeting members for this year and then also the next year. And then just to let you know from the last, I think, what an issue happened. For the last, for the last month about what the quality of work that place, that year, the information as well. Thank you, note from one of our staff members. So I believe this probably is kind of the change second, some of the board, or the executive board.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Okay, so I just attached that summary, but that was made available for third of all, but I'm interested in that.
Sure, it was almost not an eventful. It was their budget meeting. So we went through in detail their budget. They also sort of collected and reelected some members of the executive board. But it was, we all voted a line. But it was, it was really focused on their budget. But they have their next three meetings for the year planned out. And we can decide who goes. I'm happy to keep going, but if anybody else wants to. Yeah. Wednesday, August twenty-fifth. Wednesday, December first. Wednesday, March second, next year. And Wednesday, June first of next year.
We can put something in, you know, the presentation, I'll have you page that. A lot of time ago, if you want to rotate that. That also will be going to the cloud next year, so we'll have that presentation. John, did they indicate whether they'll continue meeting virtually?
Oh, they're not meeting virtually anymore. That was an in-person meeting, it was an in-person, they're going to continue with that. It was all socially distanced. But yeah, no, it's all in person.
Great, thank you for attending that. It for this meeting. Moving on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items? Anything? So please type them to my chat box.
I just wanted to share, and I apologize for a little bit of chaos earlier during that practice presentation. That we received, you know, the incorrect link without today's meeting. So Mr. Hanson has corrected that with something else in social media. And then people wanted to support you, it'll be on our website in its entirety. So I just wanted to share what we were discussing. So maybe that explains why no one would.
Thank you for pressing. Okay, moving on to others, do you have any others this evening? Yes, Tom?
Yeah, I have one. There is a, there's a health fair being held. At Mondaline High School tomorrow and Thursday. And it's, they do this annually with physical exams, free physical exams in that for community members. But there will also be COVID vaccines. So that's sort of a new offering for this year. Nine to two, Wednesday, this Wednesday and this Thursday.
We just sent something out to along with that, that they are doing a vaccination.
Great. Please, does anyone have any other others? Then could we get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Cabello? Bayla, yes. And Anguola, yes. Bayla, yes.
Yes.
That concludes our meeting for the evening. Thank you all for coming, thank you for attending the earlier training as well. We will be doing that evaluation.